All right, well, good evening. It is 7:00 P.M. It is June 2nd, 2025, and this is the regularly scheduled council meeting for Worcester City, and it is also livestreamed on YouTube. Our next regular meeting is going to be June 16th in Ezra Minder. Our next meeting after June 16th will not be until September 2nd. So with that, Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Abernathy.
Here.
Mr. Gaffey.
Here.
Mr. Husey.
Here.
Ms. Knappich. Mr. Malta. Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
We knew Mr. Malta wasn't going to be here. Unfortunately, Ms. Knappich, due to her injuries, was unable to make it this evening, and didn't find that out till about two hours ago. So in any event, we do have a quorum. Clearly, our three reading items will stay on their second readings, and we'll move to third readings for the next meeting, and we do have at least two pieces of new business that we can proceed with. At this time, I ask you to stand and join the members of the City Council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 19 meeting? So moved by Mr. Husey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Mayor, good evening.
Good evening, Ms. President.
Enlighten us.
I will try. But, you know, such an enlightened group already, it's a pretty high bar, so I'll do what I can.
Well, thank you.
So since our last meeting, school's out, and although summer isn't officially here yet, for the first time maybe today, it feels like it's here. Freonator pool is open after some delays. Open being a technical term. I'm not sure how many days they've actually been in operation because of the weather, but that's soon to start. And those of you with children or grandchildren, you know, we've got the full activity going on of T-ball, softball, baseball, with swim meet soon to follow. Wanted to make a note that the summer music season is also underway, and remind everyone that Main Street is running events down in the square all Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights from now through, I think, September or mid-October. Also, the Arts Center is sponsoring free concert series on their lawn with the next event on June 11th. And our farmer's market, if I didn't mention that last time, is now up and going. So lots of things to do downtown. Just a few items since we last met on May 21st. I attended a meet-and-eat lunch event with the Wayne Economic Development Council staff. That included Mayor Robertson from Redmond, Ben Maybach from Worcester Brush, and Armin Mastroi from Artiflex. Just a chance to meet for lunch and just talk about, get to know each other better, frankly, as opposed to talking about any deep and serious issues. Following day, had a breakfast meeting with Dr. McCall from the College of Worcester, pretty much the same. As you know, that was right after graduation week, or no, that was right before graduation weekend, and, you know, their schedule, or her schedule really, has changed then. She goes from being in charge of a working campus to going out and doing all the travel that's entailed with that job. The 26th, we had the Memorial Day Parade and ceremony at Worcester Cemetery. Gil Ning, who I think probably most everybody in the room knows at least a little bit, was the speaker, and I'm not sure if it's available out there on YouTube, but if you can find it out, again, I'm assuming it's out there somewhere. Everything's out there on YouTube somewhere, I think. But Gil gave a very nice, meaningful talk about his time in the service and experiences coming out of the service. It was a very worthwhile ceremony. May 27th, I was invited to attend the Breakfast of Champions event at Keene Elementary, kind of a end-of-year ceremony they have for the students who've gotten recognition through the year. That was a lot of fun. The following day, we had an open house for Kip Crane. I think a lot of you probably know Kip. Kip is retiring after a long run, really, it's his second retirement, from a long run out to Wayne County Schools Career Center with Lynn Mumawall teed up to take his place. This afternoon, we had the County Corrections Board meeting at the Commissioners' Meeting Room. Mr. Myers was there, wearing a hat other than a city councilperson, so a lot of, again, I talked about this, they only meet quarterly, so doesn't meet often, but there's a lot of community corrections deals with the operation of the jail in large, to some extent, but also, you know, the procedures that follow, how people get into that facility, and then what happens when they leave. You know, maybe that, what happens when they leave being the most important part of it. So there's a lot of moving parts in that, a lot of organizations in the community trying to do good things, and that board tries to coordinate those efforts, so not an easy task, I mean, but it's an important one. So I was glad to see Scott there, even though he wasn't there on behalf of the city. Earlier today, we had a representative from Frank LaRose's office. He's a Secretary of State. The gentleman's name was Caleb Steiner, so my first assumption was he was a Wayne County boy, but he was not. Apparently, you can be a Caleb Steiner and not be raised in Wayne County, but we had a nice talk, Andre and Joel said in on that. And then just a little bit ago, we had a meeting with Senator Landis. Mr. Husey was part of that as well, and as always, we have our, you know, he represents four or five counties, or at least parts of four or five counties, and all of Wayne County, and he tries to, it's like children where you try to show them all equal love, and he tries to do that, and we have our hands out all the time, saying, "But don't you love us the most?" And he says, "No, but we can try." A couple of things looking ahead, June 10th is the Quanah Strawberry Social in Christmas Run Park. That's kind of a ritual of summer for a lot of people. June 11th, the Special Olympics torch is coming through Worcester, and I'll put in a plug for that. I think I've got a family member that's going to be carrying the torch for part of the way, and we're excited about that. On the 12th, we've got a quarterly meeting, our regular quarterly meeting, with the Wayne County Commissioners. June 12th through 14th, for the first time, Worcester will be hosting the annual conference meeting for the East Ohio Conference of the United Methodist Church on the College of Worcester campus. This will bring about 700 visitors to town for this meeting, and I've been asked to provide some welcoming remarks, which I'm happy to do. It could be, and again, I'm not pushing this because I'm a Methodist, but because I'm familiar with the story, a lot of changes have gone on in that denomination in the last few years, and I think it'd be great if Worcester ended up being the home, the permanent home of their annual conference, so I'm kind of hoping for that, but we'll see how that goes. But a good opportunity to show off the town a little bit next week, so I hope the weather cooperates, and I guess we're two weeks away from that now. June 14th, the Worcester Police Department and the Quanah Club will be sponsoring their annual bike rodeo that morning at Cornerstone. Later that same day, Main Street will be sponsoring their Kids' Day event at the library from noon to 3:00. Then finally, on June 17th, we've talked all year, I think, about the zoning review steering committee at different parts, and we're trying to, you know, close that circle off, and we're kind of in the end stages of that. So the zoning review steering committee will be meeting that day to review proposed amendments to the residential zoning code, and again, the process would be that hopefully they'll come out of that meeting or in a subsequent meeting with a recommendation to take the planning, which in turn, you know, ideally, planning will approve that recommendation, and before anything happens with it officially, it'll be this body that takes action on that. Is that fairly accurate, Vince?
That's correct.
All right. And then June 22nd, I think I passed this out of the last meeting, the Ohio National Guard Unit will have a Touch a Truck event out at their place on West Old Lincoln Way. So that's it. Joel, you've got some comments I think you're going to add?
Sure. Just, I thought I'd just give a couple of highlights. If you didn't make your way all through multiple pages of our informational email, just a couple of highlights in there. One was the potential for the city to receive a little over $2 million from a lawsuit, and Mike's been doing the lion's share of the work on this. We were just, we were notified a while back, maybe last year, that there was a class-action lawsuit for anybody that could potentially have PFOS in their water system, and at that point, there was really no obligation of them to say, "Yes, you want to sign on and see what happens." So we got notice, at least initially, that we potentially could get a little over $2 million, about 65% of that this year, and then the rest over the next seven to eight years. But we're still waiting, so if we do get a check, we'll be coming to council to author our acceptance and to use that money for projects down at the water plant. That could potentially pay for almost two, our next two wells, you know, that we already had planned anyway, so that would be nice if it comes through. But lots of stuff are changing at the federal level, so we're still watching that to see what happens, but just wanted to point that out. And if anybody was wondering, the AFFF settlement, initially, a big piece of that was the Aquius Film-forming foam. It was, because a big source of PFOS was in firefighting foam. We don't have any, we haven't for many, many years, but it covers anything that that could be into, just in case you were wondering. A little bit smaller scale, Kevin White did apply for a $20,000 grant for wrapping of our transit vehicles, and we rewarded that, so we're starting that. We had our, we got our proposals in, we reviewed those a couple of times with ODOT, and with ODOT's help, we tentatively, you know, reached out to award that. As soon as we get all the paperwork back, we could potentially be operating our, excuse me, our new system on August for festival right now, so that's all good news, but Kevin's been doing an awesome job. People always ask, and down in the middle here, you'll see, and some information from Vince, there are continued conversations for Chick-fil-A, if anybody's interested, so seems to be further along than it ever has been to keep those rumors going. Another potential restaurant, maybe Steakhouse at the north end, near Meyer and Outlot up there, still talking, just so you know, and I listed that in there. Something else that, in your, in the memo, there was a link under Development Projects for Wayne County Land Use Plan, and here, Jonathan's been doing the lion's work there, but we're working with the county, with WDC. It's countywide, to do a plan, mostly looking at industrial sites. You know, we looked ahead many years ago, bought some land up at the north end of town that's almost gone now, and mostly been for community businesses that have expanded there. So we just want to be ahead of the game, do that same kind of thing, and be looking countywide where that next site could be. I just would highly recommend clicking on that link if you didn't. It's pretty impressive, the stuff that Jonathan's put together on a countywide basis. And just a couple of last things, we're starting our next Citizens Academy. Those have been pretty full the last few years, so we'll be sending out some finalizing invites for that here for this, this year. There's a waiting list now, but if you know anybody that, you know, that might be interested, please definitely let them know. And finally, on this Saturday, I get the privilege of participating in a tour for about, what I am told is about 40 Boy Scouts, so they're going to be coming here, City Hall, the fire station, the sheriff's office, and courtroom down there and back, so that'll be this Saturday, this Saturday morning. That's all I have.
Okay. Agenda review, as Mr. Sanders has indicated, the items on old business will remain on old, second reading. We have two new items of business. Both of those are budgeted and will be presented by Ms. Warden. The administration would respectfully request that council consider passage of both items tonight, particularly the second one for reasons that I'm sure that Ms. Warden and Mr. Fritz will explain. The last thing I have is a memo that you received as part of your board package that I'm going to go ahead and read, not so much for council benefit, it's for the public's. So, "Dear Members of Worcester City Council, in accordance with City of Worcester Charter Section 4.04, I hereby nominate for your confirmation Andrea D. Uller to become the city's next Director of Law. Ms. Uller joined the city in April of 2024 as Deputy Director of Law. Prior to joining the city, Ms. Uller was an associate attorney with Critfield, Critfield, and Johnston, LTD, where she practiced in a variety of areas of law, including local government law, construction law, contract law, and real estate law. Prior to joining private practice, Ms. Uller was the Court Administrator/Staff Attorney/Mediator for Wayne County County Police Court, where she oversaw the day-to-day operations of the County Police Court and served at the pleasure of the judges of the Court of County Police. In her legal career, Ms. Uller has also served as a civil chief for the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office, serving as legal advisor to all county boards, officers, elected officials, local libraries, and the 16 townships in Wayne County. Ms. Uller has been a practicing attorney in Wayne County for over 12 years and has represented clients, including, excuse me, including political subdivisions in a wide array of legal matters. Hired in April of 2024 as a Deputy Law Director, Ms. Uller is presently serving in the capacity of Acting Director of Law for the city. With your confirmation, Ms. Uller will immediately commence her duties as Director of Law. Respectfully submitted." Mr. President?
All right, thank you. So with that, we don't need a motion on this, but we do need a voice vote to approve the appointment of our new law director, so all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
President, I would like to welcome you, well, assuming we all vote yes. But I wanted to please remind you that you're also our law director, not just the city administration's Director of Law, so we look forward to working with you as well. Thank you.
All right. With that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Welcome aboard, a second time.
Thank you very much. I'm excited for the opportunity, and I look forward to continuing to serve the city and being a member of the team here forever, and so.
And you'll need a new nameplate.
Apparently now it's official. Thank you very much.
We had no petitions or communications from the public. We do have a public hearing that will be chaired by Mr. Abernathy.
All righty. Well, we'll go ahead and kick that off. So we do have our tax budget for 2026. I'm not even going to begin to touch that myself, so we will let Mr. Dordia go ahead and guide us through the tax budget.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Interestingly enough, I look back, this is my 33rd tax budget. Back in the old days, the state would send us this, literally, this booklet, and we'd stick it in a typewriter and perform it. So it's become a little, but this is just basically a requirement of the Ohio Vice Code, Section 5705, 2018, I believe, needs to be adopted by City Council by July 15th, submitted to the county auditor by July 20th. Essentially, the county budget commission will certify our tax rates. We won't change unless we request it changed, if we're not. I developed this budget basically based on what you see in the, I start with the 2026 forecast and the $2020 appropriation budget, and I just update management from there. And the general fund, you'll see, there's 2003, 2004 actuals, what we budget for '25, and then what's on estimate for '26. And then that's, there's a section for revenues on page two. Page three, there's a section for expenditures, and then two pages on our special revenue funds, where we get tax dollars towards pension, if our pension, it's going to be four or five, and then all these special revenue funds are on pages six and seven, and that's just for the 2026 year. Another thing that they do show here is on page eight, you'll see a statement of permanent improvements. I grabbed those from, not all, but I just grabbed some for you, I have this from our capital list for '26. And just to touch on one, a couple, I'm sorry, S5 well, $1 million budget for that, for the water fund, just the sewer lines, police vehicles, replacing the Horton vehicle for fire, our final City Hall window retention project, and about $2 million for the street resurfacing and a downtown street resurfacing phase five budget. Of course, those may or may not come to you during the progress budget based on priorities, but those are in there as we speak. And the other thing, just I would note, is we're required to include our amounts of our debt outstanding, January 1st, and then the amount of principal measures required to cover our debt during the year. And that, that is pretty much it. Very exciting, but that's something that has to be done.
All right. Any members of council see anything on there that stuck out, anything that we want to ask Mr. Dordia about? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and conclude the public hearing.
All right. Thank you very much. That moves us into unfinished business, which at this point, Resolution 2025-39, Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-39, a resolution providing for the annual tax budget for fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2026.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
We're going to avoid some redundancy, seeing as we just discussed that, so we're going to go ahead and leave this on second reading and move to the third and final reading.
All right. Very good. Next item, Ordinance 2025-09, it's, this one's kind of gotten ping-ponged around a little bit. Ms. Warden did it last time. Mr. Husey is going to do it this time, but before that, Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025-09, an ordinance amending Part 11 zoning of the codified ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, to rezone land to PD planned development for property located on the west side of Burbank Road.
Mr. Husey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, we touched base on this at the last meeting, just an application to rezone 18 acres of land behind Bueller's Milltown for a housing project by Weaver Custom Homes. Planning Commission unanimously approved this recommendation to go from R1, R4 to a PD zone. Can't take any action, but if there's any questions with council, Mr. Marion's here to address those. I thought I saw Mr. Spitzel here, but he does not look like he's here.
Okay. All right, well, no questions, then we'll say this one's had its second reading. We'll move on to the next item, Ordinance 2025-10. Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025-10, an ordinance approving an application for the renewal and expansion of a designated outdoor refreshment area in the City of Worcester, Ohio.
Mr. Husey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, it's something we can't take any action on, so we'll go to the next meeting. We need to do a five-year review of our DORA zone. I think the DORA's been a good addition to downtown Worcester over the last couple of years, and we don't see any issues with this, but we have to do this review every couple of years. Any questions or comments? Sure, we can discuss them, but it seems unnecessary at this time, because we can't act on it.
Correct. Okay. Well, no other comments. We'll move on to new business. Resolution 2025-42, which is a budgeted item, as the mayor had previously stated, and we'll turn it over to Ms. Warden as soon as Ms. Hamilton reads it for us.
Resolution number 2025-42, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for improvements to the Madison Hill Booster Pump Station and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this is a request to bid the Madison Hill Booster Station improvements, and this includes pump replacement, piping replacement, electrical and scatter replacement, and the addition of a natural backup, I'm sorry, natural gas backup generator that will power the booster in the event of a power outage. The existing building will remain, but everything inside will be replaced. This booster station pumps, I'm sorry, the booster station pumps and electrical equipment were installed in the early 1970s and are now obsolete. The booster station is the only non-redundant station in the city and continuously supplies the south high-pressure zone with water. The improvements will convert the station from three pumps to two pumps and are estimated to cost $500,000. And Mr. Fritz is here this evening, in case anybody would like to ask any questions about With no questions, I will make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Husey. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
And our next item and last item will be Resolution 2025-43. Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-43, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of additional funds for the purchase of metering equipment and pressure monitoring service for utility infrastructure and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you again. So this resolution comes from the city's Utilities Department as well, is a request for permission to exceed the $75,000 annual spending threshold going to Badger Meter for 2025. We use Badger Meter for replacement metering equipment and hydro pressure monitoring services, and the numbers required and price increases over the years have pushed this vendor above that $75,000 threshold for the year, which just requires approval from the city. And as Mr. Mayor stated in his opening remarks, this is equipment, and these are equipment and services that we rely on for our Utilities Department, so it's, unless anybody has a question for Mr. Fritz, I'm going to make a motion to adopt.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that moves us onto miscellaneous, short meeting. With that, I guess we'll start with Mr. Husey. Have anything to add this evening?
Short and sweet. Let's get on to the next meeting, Mr. Sanders.
Sounds good. Mr. Abernathy?
I'd like to take a moment to congratulate a Worcester high school graduate, Ben Haven, who graduated from West Point Academy within the last week, so I just want to put out congratulations to him, and other than that, I have nothing else to add.
All right. Very good. Mr. Gaffey?
I have nothing to add tonight.
Ms. Warden?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Mr. Myers?
I actually have five things. They're brief, they're really brief. A couple, I've been contacted, and I've actually talked to the mayor as well about property damage and not being repaired by the fiber cable companies, and I know our engineering staff is, you know, Brandon and John, they're tired of it, and not in a way of not wanting to help people, but just it's been a long process for them, and I know a lot of our residents have unresolved issues. And I want to point out to the public, and I've talked to a number of folks directly, there's a couple of different buckets that these things fall in. If it's within the city right of way, which is typically your sidewalk to the street, definitely give the city a call, talk to our engineering folks, and we're going to put a lot of, as much pressure as we possibly can to get those things taken care of. We have some control over that. There is some property damage that I've been told about that's in the private right of way, which would be potentially behind your house, which was, right of way, granted when your house was built by the developer for utility installation. Those kinds of things, the city has less leverage, but we'll try to help when those cases arise. And the third case is when the utility, whichever cable company it might be, may have encroached on your private property, and that's a separate issue in that, where you might want to take the cause straight to them. You do have legal course of action if they've gotten onto your private property. So just to clear up, there's, it's not just cut and dried, it's the city's fault, and you call us and we try to help, but in some cases, we can try to help you, but in others, we can only advocate in your behalf. So that was a long one. Ashley's not here, so I won't pick on her, but I wouldn't, I didn't see, I did read all 12 pages, Joel, that you sent, I didn't see any update on the Christmas Run Pool, but I know that our mayor's, it's a passionate project of his, so I'm sure it's being looked after, but I wouldn't mind hearing how that's coming, because I haven't seen any, you know, dirt moving just yet, so. Kevin White, again, great work on everything he's been doing, I've been in communication with him. I know we're moving towards picking one of our RFP partners. I will remind the administration that there are a number of our community mental health providers that are concerned that the fixed route doesn't go close enough to their facilities up on the north end off of Akron Road, Bendon, Noble, and Commerce. I noticed there was an Economic Development Fund, or what we called Bed Tax Proposal. Couple of things, one, it alludes to still reviewing. Couple of things, one, um, it alludes to still reviewing one of the applicants, um, that we would look to forward to pretend, potentially recommending funding. Does that mean there's more money than has already been outlined in my memo available?
Phil's been handling that, but it will all be gone, and all the money will be gone. The one, the third one asked for more than we had.
Oh.
We're trying to, we're trying to scale that down so we can definitely give them.
Something?
Yes.
Okay. So that was my question, was, you know, what was the total amount? 'Cause these two funds seem to total around fifty, so I didn't know if there was additional funds to give to that third applicant, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're a little over, like, three percent under last year, 'cause there's been a, there's been a hotel at the South End of Stone construction.
Yeah.
So we're looking probably between seventy-five, eighty thousand is what we're getting.
Okay. So we might be able to, okay.
And so our hope is to give basically the same amount.
I, I gave, I did the math, yeah, I, I see. Yeah, I don't wanna go, I don't need to go into the detail, you guys have been handling it on your side, so. And then the last one, I wanna congratulate Phil on graduating from the Citizens Police Academy. I heard you represented the administration well, I think, in the classes, so congratulations.
Almost got taken out by a retired doctor, too.
Well, you had a, you had a knife and he had a gun, so what are you gonna do?
Oh, that would be great. That would be great. Uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you all.